All right, it is six thirty-six on May ninth, two thousand and eighteen. Um, and we're gonna call the school committee meeting to order. Uh, we have a fairly short meeting tonight. We have a single agenda item, and that is our fiscal year two thousand and nineteen budget. Uh, we're gonna have a um, a discussion on the budget, and then we're gonna have a vote to approve the proposed budget. So I will open it to the discussion. Um, it could be anything uh, that we are seeing on the line item budget, or anything related to the conversations that we've been having so far. But just for everyone's, everyone's benefit, since uh, I think during the last couple of days, we got three, four requests for clarification from different sources. Um, we wanna make sure that everybody understands the budget that we're going to be approving tonight. Uh, is the same budget that were presented last week at the public hearing, and it is inclusive of all services that were, we want to keep in the school. I think there was a confusion based on the conversation that we had at the public hearing last week. Our approach is as follows. We come up with our own budget, and then the town had an approach to the school budget that said, we will fund um, the minimum required uh, school spending plus three hundred and five thousand dollars, which was the override from two thousand and five. And each time we have these conversations, we are asked to explain where we are compared to that number. Uh, two weeks ago, when we met with the uh, um, select board and the finance committee, the select board let us know that they were able to uh, provide additional funding in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars. We took that into account, and we went to the public hearing with that uh, amount in our budget already. Um, at that point, the gap between what the town would use uh, as their number, which is the net minimum uh, required uh, spending, plus three hundred and five thousand, and what we had in our budget was two hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. Uh, customarily, we, we explain what would be affected if uh, we, we were not to get that amount from the, from the town meeting. Let me put it the other way. If the town meeting would not agree to provide what's in that gap, what would be affected? And we then come up with some line items that add up to that amount. They were not necessarily completely hypotheticals, but those were services that uh, the administrative team had, had uh, highlighted that could be potentially affected if we did not have those two hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars in our budget. However, the, the uh, budget that we will be approving tonight includes those two hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars, and we are looking forward to having uh, conversations with the town meeting, and hoping to get those funds to be able to keep the uh, services and programs as they are today. Is it here, explanation?
Very. So it probably also makes sense to have a discussion about um, what happened at the last joint meeting, just to update.
Okay. You wanna do that?
Well, it's a discussion.
So it, at the last meeting, and I think we, we have been um, I think we have been praiseful of the change in uh, in tone in our conversations. And I personally enjoyed that conversation. Doesn't mean that we agreed on everything, doesn't mean that at times it didn't uh, get somewhat tense. Um, but we are all really representing different perspectives. When I say we, that's uh, our committee, uh, the select board, finance committee. But I think it was, it was clear that um, this year, we are coming from a place where we are looking to find how we can uh, how we can improve things. What we have in mind when we say improvement or solution may not be the same thing, maybe different things. But uh, at least a, a, a good majority of those folks who were present at that meeting had uh, had good suggestions uh, to improve the way we look at our school budget. Uh, we fund our school budget. Uh, the disagreement is always um, uh, it stems from the funding uh, sources, wherever we're going to be funding those. Um, wh- what should be clear is that the last month or so, when we had these meetings, we uh, agreed that there are two different, two different paths we have to follow. The first one is the short-term path. Uh, we can't really change the existing funding sources for our schools overnight. So the funding sources for that reason, for short-term solutions are, are obvious. Uh, we have to have conversations around, and we have been, uh, free cash, stabilization funds, uh, or override. It, you know, those are the obvious solutions. The long-term uh, conversation um, means a lot more than that. It means economic development for the town, increasing the sources, including uh, um, the, the revenue that the town generates uh, by coming up, coming up with creative ways. We decided at the beginning of this last meeting that we are going to uh, pick that topic up on June fourteenth and continue that conversation with the intent of coming up with a long-term solution. Um, a- as a, as a um, a joint body, again with the select board and the finance committee. On the short-term side, I think we had, we had some good conversation, but we also had some confusion, and we all have also some questions um, as to where we landed. A few clarifications on that. The two hundred thousand dollars that the select board had um, had offered about a week, ten days ago, when we had our joint meeting, it did not seem to have been uh, fully agreed upon by the, by the finance committee. Uh, they said that they were not present uh, at that meeting, and they wanted to find out a little more about the source, about, you know, how that came about. Um, that said, I did not hear anyone say that it was off the table. Uh, it wasn't, it wasn't what I heard, but it was not necessarily uh, something that they said. It was a foregone conclusion that they fully agreed to that. Um, the other thing is that they had not had their conversation, their final conversation, I think, with respect to the uh, town budget, which they are uh, doing this week. I believe as we speak, they're, they are having uh, the meeting, which will include their conversation uh, uh, related to the school budget as well. So we're gonna find out um, later today, or uh, maybe tomorrow, about what their decision is. Regardless of what it is, let me put it this way. Regardless of where we land, where they land, our intent is go to the town meeting with the, with the budget that we are looking at today. So if, for whatever reason, at that point in time, instead of talking about the two hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollar gap, we need to talk about a four hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollar gap, we will do that, and we will do our best to explain it, explain it to the town with all the reasons why that is happening. But we will also do it um, uh, by explaining where we were last year at the same time, and where we are um, this year at this point in time. Last year, we had, after making uh, quite a few reductions, uh, we were two hundred thousand dollars uh, more in terms of our gap. Uh, at this point in time, that's what we went to the town meeting with. This year, we are uh, through a variety of, of um, conversations, uh, shuffles of programs, creation of different ways of providing uh, the services, we are able to not only go to the town meeting with uh, an amount that is two hundred thousand dollars less, and this is before the two hundred thousand uh, that the um, uh, the select board offered, as I mentioned earlier. But also, we can probably say that except for the deferral of uh, of a couple of positions that we've been talking about, we are able to keep um, the services, the programs, and the curriculum that we would like to have in our district intact, uh, even with, with that uh, lower gap. So I think we, we're in a good place, as we've been uh, explaining during the last several meetings. Uh, even in terms of enrollment, which has been our Achilles' heel uh, um, the last ten years or so. Uh, this is the first year we are seeing an increase in our enrollment compared to the first day of the school year. We have more students in our district this year than we had, or at this point in time, than we had when we started the school year. Um, we are seeing more interest um, expressed in our school district for next year as well. Our superintendent has been receiving uh, letters of interest from uh, from uh, families. Um, there are some families moving into Granby, uh, and that is obviously uh, the best news, that Granby again is uh, receiving families with children, school-age children. But also, we are hearing from uh, folks who would like to explore Granby Public Schools for school choice as well. Um, and we're hoping that a number of them will be here with us uh, next year. We don't know what those numbers are, but uh, enrollment is open through summer until schools start. Um, so to basically uh, recap where we left it off, we told everyone at that meeting that we were going to go with the budget that we have. So there was no secret. In fact, we told everyone that this was the number we looked at last week uh, uh, also. Where we land in terms of what we can do uh, to close some of that gap, that is dependent on what kind of conversation is happening tonight at the uh, finance committee meeting, and what we will be able to come up with during the next month or so, because our budget will not be voted on uh, until, until June, until the second uh, leg of the annual town meeting. Did I leave anything out?
Just, I guess just to clarify, we're gonna vote on the budget tonight to present to the town, and at that point, it will be final in June at the town meeting, right?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that, that was understood. Yeah.
Discussion will start at the first annual town meeting, which is May, which one, May?
May fourteenth.
May fourteen.
Yeah.
And then this, and then the second part is June eleventh.
Yeah, yeah. Typically, there is no budget approval in the first meeting. What is, what, what is different this year is, is that we're trying to see whether or not, as a result of these conversations, we could talk about what portion of the free cash that is available to the town could be used for school budget. There is a little over one point four million dollars in free cash this year. Um, and in past years, we typically put that uh, free cash in stabilization funds, uh, and that, that basically puts that amount away uh, unless there is a two-thirds vote to take it out and use it for, uh, for other purposes. Um, our questions around that free cash was whether or not, again, a portion of that could be used for school operating budget uh, as a short-term uh, solution. And I believe it is something that many school districts do, and the healthy conversation that we had with the other two uh, two committees uh, gave us some hope that by now, we could have had some portion of that clearly uh, allocated for school budget. But then uh, the roof repair was uh, brought up, and unfortunately, um, we did not know this until the meeting, uh, our joint meeting last week. Apparently, the warrant is already written in such a way that unless that free cash is spent for uh, that project, the roof repair project, it uh, it basically becomes unavailable, uh, unless we do something else with it by the end of the fiscal year. The way free cash works, it is the, the amount that exceeds the, well, it can be two different things. It is revenue generated in excess of what was, what is spent during a fiscal year, and that becomes available for the town to use. It's already a, a combination of things. It's, for the most part, um, uh, taxed, uh, property tax, that's already uh, received from uh, the taxpayers of the town, and there are some other sources that add up to that, and then that becomes free cash if they're not used at the end of the year, the previous year. Then the state approves it as free cash, certifies it, and then tells the town, you have this much uh, available to you to be able to use for other uh, purposes. That's, that's, that amount is available to you for you to do something with it, not uh, necessarily giving the town any direction as to where it should be used or how it should be used. Um, as I mentioned, we typically put our free cash in, in um, in stabilization funds, or if there is a dire need for some equipment, or one year there was some gap, uh, including school lunch program and school choice program, that can become part of the conversation, and part of the free cash can be used for that, but most of it goes into sta- uh, stabilization fund. What we cannot do is, if we cannot decide what to do with that amount by the end of the fiscal year, that amount disappears for one fiscal year. It has to be uh, specifically dedicated for something, and that something could be as simple as we're gonna put it in our stabilization fund. But the town has to vote and decide what will be done specifically with that amount. If nothing happens to it, then it disappears for one year. It doesn't uh, disappear for eternity, but for one year, it becomes part of the conversation next year. In fact, when the state tells us that, you know, we have some free cash next year, it will be the previous year's uh, free cash plus whatever free cash uh, was available. They will, they would tell us that that's the amount available to us. So this is a little complicated, and we know, we use terms like free cash and stabilization and, and all that, and it gets even more complicated. But what we wanted to do, we were told, cannot be done regardless of what it is, because once you, once you um, declare a purpose for that amount, unless it is used for that purpose, then it doesn't get used at all. That's what we were told, uh, we were told, and that is the uh, school roof repair project. Of course, the interesting thing is, we still don't know what the true cost of that roof project is. Um, and I'm not saying this uh, complaining about it, but I'm uh, saying this, uh, inquiring whether or not there will be uh, some leftover amount, uh, 'cause some of the uh, bids that we ha- oh, some of the estimates that we have are really not as high as the total amount of the free cash. So I don't know what would happen to the remainder of that free cash, if it's not used. But at this point, probably it's moot for us to have a prolonged conversation on that, because uh, we were told that it's not going to be available for any other use than the uh, roof repair for the, for the upcoming fiscal year. So that's, that's the free cash conversation. That's all I have. Any questions? Looks like you have some stuff.
Well, I've been writing some notes down.
Okay.
Um, so I guess I'm gonna be the um, the bad cop here.
There's no backup, just you're always, you're always on.
Part of the conversation.
Yeah.
Um, so I'm a li- I am disappointed about the two hundred thousand dollars now being back, um, sort of being redacted, um, especially in light of the confusion when it was discussed. Um, there, it, it just seems that there should have been some more clarity before, before any sort of commitment was made. And, you know, we based our, our budgeting on that commitment, and then to now have it be backed out, um, it, it throws into question, you know, what are we writing the article for? Right? Because we, we, we have so much, so much time before we get that article in, right? So it can get published in the annual town meeting. So is it gonna be two ninety-seven? Is it gonna be four ninety-seven? Um, it's, it just, I'm disappointed that there wasn't more leadership taken on that particular um, topic. Um, as far as the roof repair goes, again, it, it just feels as though the school committee and the superintendent should have been involved in the conversations all along, and before it showing up as an article. Because to me, it feels as though taking one point four million dollars out of free cash or stabilization when we have a four hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollar budget gap, um, it doesn't make much sense to me. It just doesn't make sense to me, especially considering that we can find other ways to um, pay for this project without paying for it in cash upfront, just because the money is there, you know. There's only, there's a limited amount of funds that we have in this town, and there are many projects that need to get done, so I don't think there was a robust enough discussion on, on the roof repair.
I don't think there was any discussion really that involved us, so.
There wasn't, we. Exactly.
Yeah, I think that's fair.
So on the one hand, you know, we talk about not having enough in the rainy, rainy day funds, right? And clearly, because we can't, we can't shore up our budget, we haven't been able to do that for the last several years. And on the other hand, we're taking one point four million dollars out of stabilization or free cash to fund a roof project. So I, I guess, and when we ask the questions, the answers that we get, um, again, I, I just can't make sense of, of the um, I guess, just the line of discussion that we do have around it now. Uh, so the other thing, the final thing, was the seventy-seven thousand dollars that was overdrawn from free cash last year. I, I was just blown away by that. I don't know about you guys, but.
I think that they're talking about this year's free cash, uh, based on.
Well, the fact that they knew about it, everybody seemed to have known about it, except for us, and I don't know about TMS.
My conversation with TMS was that, no, we were not informed, um, and it's an issue with the revolving accounts and how items are being charged to revolving accounts. So our, our books say we're um, zeroed, and then the towns say we're not. And so we don't, we don't have that discussion until uh, the auditors come in and reconcile that. So in the interim, we did not get any information that we were out of balance with town.
And the way that, um, the way it was discussed at this meeting was that, um, you know, we should have been privy to this information. And, and my gut, my initial reaction was, of course, our, our, our accountant should have this information. And so I, I guess I'm really confused, not to mention that I said this that night. It was, it was very embarrassing. Um, and, you know, this is just unacceptable, that here we are again, you know, one year it was the lunch deficit, and here we are again, sev- seventy-seven thousand dollars, and just completely blindsided by it.
So, so that, that's kind of, I mean, that, that was a major, you know, you know, issue for me too. I was, I was pretty upset when I heard about that. But now you're saying it's not exactly that, it's something else. It's the, it's basically the way the accounts are squared up between what we know versus what the town does. And I know Mark spent some time cleaning that up at the end of last year, but I don't know if that was, or in through, through September, but I don't know if that was just to close out last year and then start, start, start this year fresh, but um, the way it was stated at the meeting painted a whole different type of a picture.
Right, right. And that's the same discussion around the lunch deficit. You know, where, where TMS, um, they had completely different numbers, and, you know, everything was zeroed out, and there was no lunch deficit. And, and so there is a huge disconnect between the town financing and the school financing, and for it to come out like this at a joint meeting is just, you know, I find it very, um.
Yeah, I'm gonna use that though as a, as a way to segue into something about the meeting that I wanna talk about, which is, yeah, there was a lot of positives, but there were still some pretty strong signals from some people that not everybody was on the same page. And I think that's what's driving a lot of these types of framing of those types of questions, or those types of issues, being done one way, when in actuality, it could be and should be framed in a different way to actually paint the correct picture. Or, at least in a way that says, I don't really know what the issue is here, but there is an issue, maybe we should have people look into it to get to the bottom of it. Does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely.
And then that was kind of my takeaway, was like, yes, there's a lot of positive signs. I love, I love the June fourteenth idea. I was, I was on that right away. To me, that was probably the, you know, the, the best point of the night.
Agreed.
Um, but there was obvious based on the way the meeting was structured, and some of the questions that were initially being, you know, listed to ask, that not everybody uh, was really in the same place.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I hear you and I agree, but I also try to be realistic. I mean, given that we had, we had, and we still probably have many disagreements, um, small steps are always the first steps, so uh, hopefully, it is building on something. Uh, 'cause there is always something, and some of those are big items to disagree on. And each time we just disagree, you know, as, as if we're clashing, we just, you know, start falling apart, and whatever progress, if any, uh, uh, we make until that point, that evaporates as well. So I, I think, I mean, I'll, I'll remain positive, regardless of what happens, I'll remain positive. Uh, I think there are a lot of positives, if we look at what we were able to do. Uh, I think there are a lot of positives uh, that we can, we can talk about. But I'm also positive, uh, based on the fact that we had two or three joint meetings, three joint meetings. Um, it wasn't, you know, uh, the first one was a, a different uh, type of conversation. Second one was a different type of conversation. Monday was a different type of conversation. But it looks like we are slowly converging uh, on some of those teams, uh, some of those themes. Not necessarily because we are thinking alike, or we agree on everything, and I can guarantee you, there will be major disagreements this year, next year, and the year after that. But I think that's, that's the nature of things. Are we able to come up with some solutions as we're going forward? And uh, that, that, that is my thing, and that's why the fourteenth meeting, June fourteenth meeting, is important to me as well. Short-term, our sources are known, they're limited, and the conversation around those had never been pleasant, and they were not this time. Uh, my biggest disappointment was that, I don't know that it wa- was redacted, but that, you know, there is now some ambiguity around the two hundred thousand dollars that we already had included. But regardless of what it is, we have a, we have a, a, a good way of explaining uh, that gap, uh, whatever that gap might be. And regardless of what it is, at the end of the day, if the select board of the town says, hey, we in uh, collaboration with the town administrator, we have two hundred thousand dollars to offer the schools this year, uh, and they, uh, they uh, talk about it at one of these joint meetings. And then there is some uh, you know, some ambiguity that is added to it, because uh, you know, finance committee said that they were not part of those conversations. To me, you know, it is what it is. At the end of the day, when you think about it, no matter how, how much money is thrown where, uh, the town meeting will be deciding on which one of those numbers to approve. What this does is that it makes the, it makes the conversation more difficult in front of the town meeting. That's what we were talking about. Number two, and that was the end of, you know, probably the last five, ten minutes at the end of that joint meeting that we had, uh, you know, when I was asking whether or not we're gonna be able to go there as three committees uh, wi- with, with the same intent and in support of the uh, school budget, whatever that, that amount could be. To me, that is the important thing, that we don't just now start a debate in front of the town meeting. Doesn't mean we cannot talk about different issues or different opinions, different perspectives, but we're always debating these important issues during those little five-minute, three-minute uh, segments. And, you know, folks at the town meeting don't even know who to trust, who to, you know, who to believe, because everybody's throwing something at them. I mean, that includes us too. We know that. We do our homework, and we would love everybody to take our numbers and go with it. But then, you know, when you think about it, hey, our numbers are numbers too. They don't know who to, not having those extensive conversations during the year. And that's why I'm more hopeful that we were able to have at least three joint meetings where we talked about things. This is the first year, I think, uh, we had a good enough meeting that I was able to ask whether or not there was an opportunity to add four hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars to our budget and go to the town with that. I mean, whether, you know, whether everybody felt uh, uh, good or bad about it, nobody said something, you know, that was so hostile that, how, how dare you even ask that question? We were able to ask that question and repeat the question. Same thing with whether or not we were gonna go, uh, you know, as a unified front, at least in, in the way we say, we support the schools, not necessarily agreeing on how to do it, and we're working on the solutions, but we all support the schools, we're all in favor of this thing. I think it was, from that perspective, it was a good conversation on Monday too. I, 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 um.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't mean to.
But I don't, I don't, I'm not saying that we did. No, no.
I, I just, um, I, I guess what I was gonna say is, you know, to me, there was, it was, it was very evident that with a few people, there's more work to be done with, with trying to. I, I just, um, I, I guess what I was gonna say is that, you know, to me, there was, it was, it was very evident that with a few people, there's more work to be done with, with trying to get someplace where we're,
There's a lot more work, yeah, you're right.
We're all trying to push it. And as far as disagreements, I, I honestly feel they're actually healthy, right?
I agree.
We're not all gonna agree on everything.
I agree, but if you don't put, if you don't put it all on the table, then you can't talk about it.
And the only way we can get to a good choice is. Right.
And, and sometimes, you know, I think that we're afraid to do that in this town. That, you know, let, let's have the difficult conversations and yeah, it's probably gonna get messy. But as long as we're, you know, we do our best to be respectful and considerate, then, you know, let's have the difficult conversations. But, you know, if, if, if we just sit around at the table together and have nice conversations and it doesn't really amount to anything because then people go off and, you know, there's different individual agendas, then we end up at the same place.
Yeah.
So I agree. I mean, you know, sometimes meetings are difficult.
Yeah.
But that doesn't mean they can't be really healthy and productive. We just have to have them.
And I am also very encouraged that there was three, although I don't have much to, you know, relate this to, this is my, my first year. But um, you know, parts of it did seem very encouraging. Does seem like um, based strictly on last year, this year, there, there, there was an extreme openness to discuss the fact that there seems to be two separate tracks, the short term and the long term, that, that need to be addressed and both separately. So that, that's very encouraging. And then the fourteenth, you know, meeting to start the, start the discussions for the future was, was also great, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So anyway, that, is that, is it a good recap of what happened on Monday?
I think so.
Did you have anything else?
Uh, no, just that, I, there, I, I was a little unclear as to the date that Cheryl would receive a phone call about whether or not we were going to go to the town in, um, um, approving the same budget.
Yeah, so now it occurs to me that not everybody, I believe, received that message that John sent.
Correct.
So just, uh, 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 to be transparent, John Widera sent us an email. Was it today or yesterday?
This morning.
This morning and said, we are meeting this evening and we will be discussing the budget, I think, to some effect. And then Cheryl asked what time and they're unfortunately meeting right now at six thirty. They started their meeting. But we, we at least were given, courtesy of uh knowing what time and when they were going to meet. Because remember on Monday, they were not sure which day they were going to get together, so. So I, I appreciate that, you know, at least, if, if you wanna, you know, if you can and you wanna uh show up, uh, you can show up, so that was, it was good.
And my understanding is that there were gonna be a few subsequent meetings as well, right?
Yes.
So based on our vote tonight, that would give them
Yeah.
the foundation to.
Yeah, and them, you know, that makes sense to me too, that they wanted us to finalize our budget, voted in so that it's final.
Yeah, yeah.
No, that makes sense.
Yeah. So speaking of final budget, so our two thousand nineteen, fiscal year two thousand nineteen, LEA budget, and that's what we vote on because that's what involves uh town funds and everything else. The rest of our, of our budget is either revolving or grants, correct? So we don't include those in the final number because they happen uh outside all these conversations. Our, FY two thousand nineteen LEA budget is eight million, eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-four thou- eighty-four dollars. Let me say it again because I uh fumbled that one. Eight million, eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars. It is about twenty-one thousand dollars or so uh less than last year's LEA budget. Um, and the, and the remaining gap uh is less than uh what it was uh last year as well.
I'll make the motion to approve the FY nineteen budget.
Okay, for?
LEA, um, budget of eight million, eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, any other discussions, questions, comments?
Just, this is the exact number we were talking about at the public hearing, right?
Yes.
Yes, yeah. And this is a number that we shared with the uh, with the uh two other committees on, on Monday as well.
Just wanna make sure there was no more last.
Yeah, no, no, you're, you're absolutely right. That's what it is. Okay, so all in favor to approve the FY two thousand nineteen budget uh of eight million, eight thirty-nine, six eighty-four, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. I think that's all we have. However, I realize that we jumped into our budget conversation and I see um visitors here, so I will just uh switch the order and ask if you, you wanted to speak? You had anything, any comments as part of our visitors' comment section?
Um, I can say that I, I just saw um news articles that uh had me concerned. And so, um, we recently moved to Grandi a couple of years ago. Uh, two young kids that I, I hooked up with through the Grandi school system. I'm a teacher uh in Lubbock, um, and uh I really value education and just wanted to see what was going on.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for coming.
And also a teacher, I teach in Chicago. I actually went to Grandi schools. I got married to a gentleman. And I have a daughter who is in Grandi schools right now, so obviously I'm concerned about the project.
Yeah.
I hope that we were able to clarify some information, some, you know, rumored information or just uh
I think it's still concerning.
clear things. Yeah, absolutely. It's concerning to us as well.
Yeah, um, yeah, there were some, some articles and um we tried to respond and uh clarify as well. I don't know if any clarification will be uh, will be made to the articles already, already printed. But there is a confusion between the conversation around a gap and the proposed budget. And, you know, if we had said, we're gonna take the two hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars out of our LEA budget and that's what we're gonna approve and here is the impact of that, that's one conversation. What we're seeing is the opposite. And that was the opposite last week at the public hearing as well. Unfortunately, uh, it seems that w- we did not do a good enough job to make it clear. Uh, but uh hopefully we are, uh as Deanne said, uh, uh clarifying that right now that the budget that we're proposing does not have any of those cuts that were mentioned. We ha- we, we are obligated to let everybody know what that gap is and what that may correspond to. And those line items were uh the line items that the administrative team uh had put together. They're always, uh, they're always potential, but that number will be the number if we don't get i- i- the uh, the support uh at the uh town meeting. The other numbers can shuffle, I mean, the line items can shuffle around a little bit and the content may change. Um, but our budget includes all those services. We have been having these conversations for the last many years that we do not see our school district without music, without uh sports, without clubs. Those are the uh activities uh that enrich the lives of not only our students, but also our community members, our lives as well. So, so uh it was, it wasn't the intent to take out those, those um activities and clubs uh from our budget.
That's part of educating the whole child, right?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good point. We have a new strategic plan. And the strategic plan specifically talks about the whole child. And we believe that it is really not, you know, teaching the kids uh some core classes, but it is more than that, really making sure that they're exposed to uh different subjects, different activities, different enrichment. Uh, we would be going against what we are, uh, what we adopted as our strategic plan uh on Monday if we now go and say, we're gonna cut all those, all those programs and uh activities from our, our budget. So that's not the intent. But uh, you know, uh, the final say is with the town meeting. Uh, whatever we propose, the town meeting will uh, will decide what that amount is gonna be.
So I can say it, but you can't. Please come to town meeting and vote.
Thank you, Rob.
No problem.
Alrighty, anything else? Uh, anything that um we need to add to our next agenda? And by the way, um, uh, is the school committee meeting on the twenty-first of May? Because I will not be available.
Nor will I.
Hmm?
Nor will I.
I guess that's a no.
Right, so is there another date that we should be putting in our calendar for, what is it, what is a good?
What do we, what do we look like?
The rest of May, you're not here?
For members.
Okay.
The rest of May?
What do we look like for members?
Uh, that's a good question. So May twenty-first is our town election. As of the morning of May twenty-second, um, let me see. You two are the only members because uh, the two, including me, the two new members have to be sworn in to be officially members of the uh, of the committee. Um, and then uh our very first meeting, we're gonna have to, and Deanne is not actually a member after that. We have to, but she will, she will stay with us. We will uh, uh, propose her, her name uh for one of those, uh, well, actually, there's, there will be one. Uh, one open slot uh to fill it for the next year and we'll submit it to the uh select board for approval. Hopefully, at their first meeting right after that, they should be able to uh do that. So we go back to our routine five-member committee at that time.
So you have a school committee meeting scheduled for June fourth, Monday, if you are not available in May?
I'm not available for that one either.
When are you going?
Well, remember, her, her availability is also dependent on the um, uh, on the vote uh by the select board or their conversation and their ability to appoint. That one, one position will remain appointed. In fact, to be very honest, uh, acknowledge, uh, Jen is also running for another position. Uh, you know, uh, elections, we don't know which way they, they, uh, they will go, but there is a possibility that we may have two vacant position uh at that time and we may have to propose two names to the uh select board. And that brings us down to a three-member committee until those appointments are made.
Okay.
So I, I mean, I have no problem really, uh, this is a busy time. I, I'm assuming we're gonna have things to talk about. Um, uh, I, I would, I would be inclined to have a meeting, uh, regardless of the number. Uh, but I don't want to say that my presence is more important than anybody else's if the uh, the school committee would like to keep that meeting on the twenty-first.
They won't have a quorum. You're not here.
Oh, you're not here. We only have four, yeah. Uh, in fact, the twenty-first is a town election day. Do, are we even allowed to have a meeting?
I didn't have a meeting on that day in my calendar.
I had one on, on the calendar.
Okay. Yeah? Can we meet on the twenty-eighth? Would you mind if we have at least one meeting? It may be short, but if there's anything, pardon me?
Memorial Day? Memorial Day? Memorial Day?
Oh, thank you. Alright, so it's not a good day, I guess?
What about the twenty-ninth, the day after?
It's the senior banquet, but the Wednesday, the thirtieth?
We can't, uh, honestly.
Why don't I doodle?
Why don't you doodle?
Well, I'll doodle.
But I will, I will throw this out there. The twenty-second, twenty-third, any one of those days would be fine as well. Uh, if Deanne's not gonna be available for any one of those meetings, in fact, she will not be anyway because the day after, uh, the week after the election, even if she uh, uh, she was available, we don't know when the appointment's gonna be made.
Can the two of you meet on the twenty-second?
I believe I can, yeah.
What if Jen?
Can, can you just throw a few, uh, dates on the doodle and then we, yeah.
I'll throw a few dates out there. I will doodle.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good one.
I will doodle you.
And Cheryl, will you have Kathy let me know, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, since it's the uh last full committee meeting, it seems, of this year.
Hmm.
Um, thank you, everyone. I, I, I really, I really, um, I, I'm, I enjoyed every year. But this year, I really thought that everything that we were working on was, was showing improvement, uh, change, uh, collaboration. So I'm really grateful for that. Uh, also, uh, of course, I, I, I can't, you know, wrap anything up uh without going into some tangent. We could not deliver on our promise to Deanne that we were gonna have all our policies approved by the.
I know. Our policies.
You win.
I forget.
I feel like I should win something.
Like a lollipop or something.
So, thank you very much, everyone. So with that, I don't think we have an executive session today. So is there a motion to adjourn?
We'll make that motion.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Have a good evening.